National FCC LA and the National Indicator Rising Conference in the past couple of weeks.
Both done a great jobs. Brings us to number nine, public comment. We have somebody that wants to talk this morning. Dave? If not, move on to our discussion items, starting number 10, the Unicam update.
Okay, you've got a, you know, a black and white copy. It was a lot nicer in color. I don't know, do we send the digital print in color? Did they get their digital copy in color?
I don't think it included these two.
Okay. So, just a, you know, a bit of an overview. We've been talking for months about what's happening in Unicam. You've got several policies today that you're gonna approve that are mandated by Unicam Action. We won't really notice any difference on how we operate here. There's policies about dress code, requirements for new dress code, not gonna affect what we do. That primarily started in the native schools that had to do a tribal regalia, like the hair, some of those things. And then it evolved into something bigger and it was applied, obviously, to all schools across Nebraska, not just tribal schools. There's, again, we've talked about this, you know, parents' rights to access library materials. Well, we've never prohibited parents from accessing library materials. They've never asked. But if they had, we'd say, come on in and see what's in our cart catalog or on our shelves. We're ahead of things that also knew, there's a new cellphone policy. You cannot use cellphones in classrooms. Well, in Plainview, you can't use cellphones from the time you walk in the doors until the time you walk out the door. So, the law, the Unicam was, you can still use it during the passage period and lunchtime, which we had, which, you know, we concluded was still problematic. But the Unicam was now banned cellphone use in, during classroom instruction time. Well, we've kind of, we've been there for quite a while and our policy is more restrictive. But oftentimes, that's what you get from the Unicam is, okay, you don't have to adopt this policy, but if you have your own, it has to be at least this restrictive, you know, or more. You know, so you've had a chance to look through all the policies that are, that are coming up. I don't anticipate anything significant. You might have noticed in the paper this week, and this is definitely worth, you know, our attention. The governor's put together a commission to study the TOSA school funding formula, which is fantastic. I mean, that's been done many times over the decades that we've been under TOSA. He firmly believes that paying for education is a responsibility of the state. Local constituencies govern their schools, but the state will pay for it. Local tax, local property tax owners ought not bear the primary burden of pay for the education. He believes the state should pay for it. And he's moved, he and the Unicam have moved in that direction, as you know, with foundation aid. Fifteen hundred dollars per student. It's going up, I think, to fifteen ninety this next year. But he wants to relieve property tax burden, understandably. That's, you know, that's not the best way to fund schools. I don't have a solution for it. Somebody else is gonna figure that out. So, there's a commission that's been put together to study the TOSA formula, how to make it fair, balanced, equitable, and to relieve your property owners from bearing that primary burden. So, watch for that over the course of the next few months. I'll keep you posted on that. That's got a good cross-section of folks that are on it, including several superintendents across the state. But that, that could be something that will happen in Lincoln that will dramatically affect us in a positive way. Not necessarily how we operate on day-to-day business, but how we fund the business plan of public schools.
Is there a goal or a timeline for that?
I, I don't, I don't recall that I saw a, by X date, we, we wanna have a... So, they, I, I know they wanna get a whole lot of conversation done prior to the next legislative session, which will be a short session. Starts in January. So, that'll be a sixty day. So, that's always a sprint. So, Janet Hughes, the Senator Seward, will probably be the senator that will be the, the avenue for introducing that legislation. That doesn't really matter, I guess. But I, I would expect the goal is, let's try to have something to introduce in the 2026 legislative session. And they won't fix it in that legislative session, but they may take a big step in that direction. And already really have with foundation aid, because we've seen our levy come down due to foundation aid. Now, valuations still continue to rise, but, I mean, uh... So, so that's pretty significant. But again, with regard to policies today that you will pass and the Unicam update that you've had in your packet. There, there's nothing that we need to communicate to you or to our public that, hey, we now have to stop doing it this way and we have to start doing it this way due to legislative action.
Governor Pillen is up for reelection in November twenty-six, so I, I think that affects the timeline also.
We just saw Barry Kaye plans to run for reelection as well. I think we support that. He's very responsive, a good voice for rural Nebraska and rural Nebraska schools.
Okay, well, thanks for those updates on that. We'll move on to number eleven, ad hoc activities cooperative report.
They put notes in your packet from Mr. Bremer and from Mr. Schmidt.
Yeah, those were, those were really good notes. They had everything, like they're at the meeting, so...
You want me to pull those up?
Yeah, if you would. I don't know if I need to, I mean, I can highlight some of it that we're going. They really covered it pretty well.
You'll, you'll have to excuse me. I, I gotta go into my email and find those. This is just the agenda. I forgot those notes.
Yeah, yeah, we got, we got involved in a little, a little more of the details, you know, Kyle, is it Brian from Osmond?
Yeah.
Put together, you know, practice schedules, game sites. They've kind of put together coaches as well. Still some up in the air a little bit on some Osmond coaches, but Plainview's coaches are nailed down, I believe. Most of practices and games will be in Plainview. Is it junior high football that was, there's quite a bit maybe starts in Osmond?
Yeah, two days a week will be at Osmond for junior high football.
Okay.
And then all games will be played here. All pre-practices are here and then Fridays are here. And then volleyball-wise, everything was here unless their gym was open, just 'cause they have two nets and there's thirty-eight girls. So, as much as we can get on two nets versus one, that's what we're trying to do. They will host one game, and that's the first game. And then cross-country and track is all here in our schedule, so... And we hadn't got into the winter stuff yet. We've just got all the fall stuff done, so...
So, there would be a couple of days where you'd have maybe a Zoom meeting or something where you're just talking.
Yeah, football on Fridays. They don't really practice, does it? It'd be in the high school game day, so they were just gonna be like that Zoom in the mornings and be that way, so...
Would our boys still practice on that day? No, okay. So, we're not, if, if we can't get together?
We're not practicing.
We're not putting pads on. I think that's a great idea, even though our coaches make, because generally, we did practice on a Friday. Oh, we never did, I'm sorry. Or in the, we never did.
Last year, once the season started, we did practice.
I see.
So, then, go ahead.
So, Pat, you mentioned the volleyball, the more nets the better. So, if that changes, I guess, is that all communicated in the Sports U app? To let parents know, I guess, where things are going?
Yep, so Kinsey has put everything in there. Kinsey and Whitney and Jennifer are the three volleyball coaches. Uh, we have a tentative schedule put together. Brian and I went through all of their game schedule, our game schedule, to find where we would be able to send kids the most. So, it should be pretty close to accurate. There's some changes. She'll communicate all that via Sports U.
So, we, we have that new, we just got that new software, you know, what is it, the?
Powerschool.
Powerschool. So, Sports, Sports U isn't part of, is that part of Powersports? That's a whole, that's its own deal?
Yeah.
So, why aren't we using Powerschool instead of Sports? Because that wasn't as supposed to be our one.
Well, Sports U is just for the people who are out for the sports. You don't send it out on Powerschool. It goes to every single person, so...
And Powerschool is just precise, Plainview Public Schools. It doesn't bridge to Osmond. I don't know if they have Powerschool. Maybe they do, but we would be two separate entities. So, we could use that to communicate, blast to everybody. But they have to send the exact same message at about the exact same time. So, Sports U, you can put in precise people regardless of school district.
And yeah, under the communications, you know, the eighties were kind of the point, point person for the communication between the two. And then that will filter down to the junior high and the youth, the youth sports as well. Kate and Tyler from Osmond were kind of talking about, they, they're both involved with the youth here, so I'm sure they'll be in contact with each other a little bit to make sure everybody's got the same information.
So, Kate, will you be the main contact for Plainview then?
Oh, I, I was just wanting to make sure that the line of communication was clear. Like, we have a ball backer, you know, we have the ball backers for everything, but wrestling, maybe, and somehow, I don't know. But I didn't know if it was one group or if it was just it depended on the team over there. I don't think they're quite as organized as we are. He said it more depended on, well, if it's third grade basketball, you gotta talk to this guy, it's supposed to, you know... But we just wanted to make sure that there's a clear line of communication so that, like, we're having football, flag football. We invited those kids over, I think, Weston. So, we've got six or seven Osmond kids signed up for our flag football. We have a football camp. They have a football camp, you know. We just wanted to make sure that, uh, that was all open to everyone and we knew who to contact and everything, so... I was, I was gonna talk to Tyler and just say, you know, in general about baseball and stuff like that, that's a ball backer saying, here's the people we need to talk to. So that we can have those conversations start rolling for next year, soccer and everything else, so...
Thank you for doing that.
Then we kind of got into the bowling talk. I don't, David, Kyle, you want to mention the unified bowling? Explain that ten more times.
Uh, so unified bowling, um, for students with special needs. And so, that is considered your athlete, and then you have two other students that bowl with them, and they bowl as a team. So, if you co-op between two schools, you can only have one team participate at districts. So, if we were to co-op with Osmond, say they have two students, we have one student, we'd only be able to bowl one of the three students at districts. Whereas if we stay separate, we would each be able to send one student to bowl as a group. So, we talked about just doing our own teams for that and being able to share the same schedule, share the bowling lanes, share costs and all that stuff, but keep it separate just in the fact that we'd be able to have more kids participate than that way. It's not the same as when you do the actual season of bowling, which runs from November through February. You have to have five girls on a team, five boys on a team. And so, right now, the two of us separate aren't able to fill teams. We don't even have bowling. They, they were talking about adding it. Whereas we are one kid short, if not two kids short on each team, but we still are able to participate and qualify kids for state as individuals, just not as teams. So, um, it makes sense to do the unified separate just so we can have more participate. But when you do the team event, being together and having more kids and filling a team works better.
So, the unified bowling in the fall?
Yes, that runs from October to December.
And the athlete has two partners?
Yes.
And those could be, those could be football players, those could be cross-countryers, those could be any other student in the high school that bowls with them. Those kids can also do their activity. Unlike bowling in the winter where that's the sanctioned sport, if you're a bowler, you're a bowler. You're not gonna play basketball, you're not gonna wrestle. This allows kids with special needs to do something and so that classmates can do that while still the football's a custom tree. It'd be a fall thing, yeah.
So, Kyle, would, would the, the participant likely be a regular bowler? I mean, somebody on the, on the bowling team, so they're on the bowling team and also the unified bowling team when they do overlap, right?
Yeah.
So, dual participation is, is what Mr. Alexander's talking about, which the NSA is kind of talking about, maybe opening that up to everybody. But you can, you can't dual-participate in any NSA activities unless one of them is a unified activity.
So, we won't have your, your athletic bowling, your athletic bowling?
No.
Are we still offering that?
Yeah, we still offer.
Still offer that? This is just an additional offering?
Yes.
Okay.
And we have at least one?
Yes, we have at least one student.
Unified bowler that, that we expect or anticipate, and oftentimes, that kind of gets things going.
It's kind of additional offering for some special needs kids that would like to be in, in an activity. As far as the high school, you talked to Leonard, he'd, he'd be interested in if we went together on a high school team.
Yep, yep. Leonard's been asking me to find a co-op for the last two or three years, so been working on that, so...
And if we went with Osmond, then we have enough for a full team, full boys?
And we already practice over there and do our stuff there anyway, so...
They were gonna discuss, right, in, were they not sure on?
They were gonna discuss on whether they're gonna add it or not, so...
Were they a little concerned about that taking away from, I think, one of the other sports?
Yeah.
But they're not sure.
You addressed branding, the conversation about branding.
The only thing that they asked is with junior high-wise or in the co-op is if they can be Plainview Osmond. They're fine with red and white and Pirates and all that. They just asked if programs or anything like that could be the Plainview Osmond Pirates. That was the one thing that, um, they, they kind of asked. Anything other than?
I don't think so. I, like I said, I, I thought that was reasonable. I mean, we really, any other, other shield, we want, we want Plainview on the bulletin, you know, programs, things like that.
Does that change uniforms? Do they need to uniforms now because of that?
Everything that we have, um, or that I've gotten, I've just put Pirates on for that reason, so then we don't have to reorder stuff then.
Have had to add some, right? Did we, was there, and obviously, you guys know, I wasn't at that meeting, but thirty-eight girls off of volleyball, we didn't have thirty-eight volleyball uniforms, right? So, I mean, we, between the two of us, because that, that expense will be shared.
Yep, and it just says Pirates on. And talked with Brian about that, so...
And he was okay with that?
Yep.
Just in the, um, in the paper, in the roster, the program, it'll say Plainview.
And in the media, you know, and, and I suppose when announcing, you know, just?
If you have T-shirts made for whatever.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was brought up, shirts, if you'd like to say, Plainview Osmond.
Yeah.
There's shirts in the media. Then we got into a little bit about the high school girls wrestling, adding that. I don't remember how many girls they had.
I think he said there would be two, possibly three.
How many girls do you have out for wrestling right now?
Well, twelve to fourteen.
Yep.
So, significantly more than last year. Okay. How many of them are seniors?
One.
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 Two.
Two.
Let's see, I have your senior.
More than a senior.
Yeah, potentially your daughter. She was a part of that twelve, two fourteen.
Well, yeah.
Yeah.
She's the thirteen or fourteen.
Yeah. Yeah, otherwise, it's pretty young group.
Yep. Have a lot of pressure.
And then how old are the two from Osmond?
I believe one was a junior. I don't remember. I don't remember the other one.
And this is discussion for this year, high school this year?
Yep. They're gonna have discussion about whether they wanna add bowling or girls wrestling. And then at that point, if they did add it, they would ask to co-op, and that's, hopefully, we would have a discussion about it.
What's the NSA deadline for winter sports?
Winter sport is October first.
From our perspective, it doesn't change really a whole lot. They've never had it. We have the team, we have the coach. They just be, it wouldn't change our classification.
And we have two wrestling classes.
Schedule, it wouldn't really change anything besides putting two more girls in wrestling.
So, they would add, they wanna add girls wrestling but not boys wrestling?
Yeah, they, they can't add boys wrestling. They're still with Wassa.
Okay, gotcha. So, this is the stuff that they don't already have with Wassa, or they wanna add with us, potentially? And they have, and like Kate said, both these two don't really create any, no class change. Fairly easy to, you know, board with those right away, maybe some of the other sports as we get on the line. That was one thing we talked about, was trying to make a timeline. Winner would be interested in doing this, maybe adding this, or they'd like to, they'd like to kind of know, perhaps come up with that timeline. What would they get?
So, if the high school girl, girls co-op wrestling and that becomes Plainview Osmond, our boys will just be playing with that, right?
Right.
Yeah, because they're, they're still with Wassa.
Right, no, I know, but our, our boys, if we co-op the girls, our boys will still just be playing Pirates.
Yeah.
And our girls will be playing Osmond Pirates.
How is their relationship with Wassa? Have they said anything? How that's going? Is Wassa upset about this?
I wasn't at the meeting, but obviously, what I've been told by some of the parents, that's very strange.
Yeah.
There's some concerns about how football's gonna go this fall.
At the high school?
At the high school level.
Yeah.
And when you say concerns, you mean like they're not gonna play the kids from Osmond on the team or something like that?
I've heard that, I, yeah.
I don't know if they're gonna have a choice, but this is how they're gonna get treated.
It's just, yeah, more than anything. Maybe it's just, we're just talking about this, right? Kids always meet along with their parents, so that's a good thought.
Yeah, parents can't get along, kids are fine.
That's what might be, it's just parents overthinking the situation a little bit. And I hope that's all it is, because I know some of these kids anyway, it's...
Hope that's not the case.
Hope they're not actually getting into a bad situation this fall.
I think they, I think they mentioned, you know, there were some things out in the paper, Facebook.
Yeah.
They just said they, they're gonna put that behind them and they're gonna move forward from where they're at. But yeah, the, the high school football is the bigger, you know, discussion that needs, we need to talk about more, because that, that deadline, obviously, is coming up October first as well, so... They, they thought it would be best to have, you know, kind of a special meeting with the board and maybe the Osmond, Plainview board together or four separate boards. Just have the public, you know, be there, give them an opportunity to ask questions about how everything's going, as far as we know. Just to get that out there before there's an actual vote was taken. So, we said we would discuss it with our board and kind of with, you know, if we thought a joint meeting was something that would be good, they're certainly willing to do that. We also thought, well, maybe that could fill in some facility, right? Wasn't that what, we didn't want that getting intertwined too much.
That's just what I envisioned. If, I, I think it's okay to have a community meeting and let people, because I feel like most people just don't know what's going on. And if they, you know, if they heard from us, a lot of their concerns would be put to bed. But I think our meeting would turn into a, a facility discussion as well, where there'd be a lot of questions about that. That doesn't have a lot to do with Osmond yet.
If we went together.
Yeah, and I didn't know if that was worth having Osmond in that meeting. For the facility discussion. I don't know, maybe it is, I don't know.
They understood that too, which is, we agreed it probably, it would probably be a good thing to do, to have a meeting some evening, invite the public to share. But that would probably have to be sometime in August, because we're gonna have a vote at September board meeting, more than likely, if we're gonna co-op. Next year.
Well, the.
Deadline's November first. Isn't it October first?
October first, November first.
I think it's October first.
I thought if we said November first, we'd have to make the vote in October. Is this for the following year? It's not for this year?
Winter sports is October.
This year is October first.
For the next year.
Winter sports for the come.
Yeah, but the classification for the next year for football is November first, so it's a...
November one deadline is mid-application, co-op sponsorship can't be done after November first. Uh, November thirtieth would be the declaration, so you have to declare if you're gonna play eleven-man or eight-man. And then December classifications come out, February schedules come out.
It's, oh, it's in October.
It's October one, yeah. It's October, it gives a little more time then.
Is there benefits to more time versus just deciding on it earlier?
Another month of seeing how junior highs go on?
Yeah, I, I believe so. I, I think there's, I, I can say, there's some things there that, you know, how parents interact, how the communities interact. I think I'd like to see, anyway, another month, so... I'm not anticipating any problems, but it'd just be nice to get just actually see.
Give you a chance to actually see a little more time, a little more ground under our feet, that's all.
So, if that's the case, we maybe could do a September meeting, public meeting. Any thoughts on together or separate, one way or another, you guys?
I don't think I have a preference.
I agree with Kate. Can I say that we're almost, we're off track, we have both together? Needs to be focused on that topic, but I, I think it's a good idea to have everyone sit down together, so I guess I, you know, um... It's important to have the feedback from the Osmond parents, how's it going with your kids, going back and forth and all of that. And your kids being treated well, these are conversations we need to have. We need to make sure that the facility part of it stays controlled. It goes on. We don't really have any answers for that right now anyway.
Yeah. And we'd still, the committee would most likely get together after these two meetings and...
Yeah.
We're gonna talk out how they went, you know, as well. The one, the only good thing about, or one good thing about having it together was that they, you know, said, well, everybody, we could show that both boards are unified and on the same page here.
Yeah.
To answer questions from both sides, so...
I'm not trying to insinuate anything yet, but we don't know how everybody in this room is gonna vote October. So, for us to have, show a unified front in September, you know, are we saying we're gonna make the lines up in September as a board? Are we gonna vote, or are we gonna wait until October vote before we show a unified front? Hey, if we all get together in, in September anyway, as twelve people, twelve boards, well, I think we better all be on the same page, is my point. We better kind of have an idea how we're all gonna vote.
It was like eight to four?
Yep.
Well, or it depends on each side, who would, would take a vote among all of us. Amongst four to two in this room.
You all want it to be unanimous, you know, yeah, it could pass with a four to two.
I agree with you, right?
Yeah. I think up to this point, everybody's pretty much on board with the junior high. It just does, you know, adds a few more issues and some of the other sports. You know, if we don't, if we don't do anything with them, they're, that's one of their fears, that they're, and they're kind of, what do they do for the next year? Because they, their agreement with Wassa will be up, and they got nowhere to go.
Have they said, are they, are they unanimous in their intentions?
Yeah.
They don't have any way that's gonna go rogue or frills?
That wasn't their perception, no.
Okay.
They thought.
I think there might have been one court member about something that they, that they, he's on.
We've asked it before, and that would never hurt anything.
Yeah, I mean, I asked it at the Osmond, just, whole board, kind of reflect how everyone feels. Everyone's maybe got different ideas on how it should go.
I mean, since they severed their ties with Wassa, I mean, they took a vote, they severed that agreement. This is the only option that they have.
One direction to go.
So...
And then I, you know, then it'd be, you know, if you, if you went further than they'd want a timeline, you know, if we're possibly doing basketball and the boys wrestling down the road, so... That's what we need to do.
If we passed the football one, then we pretty much just have an active basketball system.
No. No, I, I think, yeah, I think.
See a little high in your eye on it, but you take more to...
No, I'm not saying that. I'm saying I think you could, you could have this in phases anyway, and you could, you could weight each sport as to what each side's needs are. Um, their two biggest needs are football and basketball. I think you could do that, for example, anyway, in phase one. You could look at other sports and determine whether or not it's better for us to come together or to stay apart anyway. I, I don't, I don't think that's the case, so in my opinion, I don't think you automatically vote in football anyway in that October vote. That everything else has to follow.
I feel they're gonna want it all or nothing, because I think that's, isn't that kind of, is that kind of what they're hoping with Wassa? Because we did a few sports.
Right, so we, we talk it through, we talk it through, to find out what each side's needs are. Like we said, football and basketball have dominated the conversation, like, that, that's, that's fine, anyway. I, like I said, maybe that's tier one, and then maybe we look at other things after that and...
As long as they're fine with it, because I think that's what, I mean, they were gonna have that discussion.
They had no structure on that thing, it was like, it was football, wrestling and whatever.
FFA.
FFA, and then it was like, and we'll work on the rest, and now they've been stuck enough on both sides. Kind of what we talked about was, whatever we do first, let's say if we decide we're gonna do high school football first and basketball or whatever it is. We would sit down and have a conversation, we would have phases, like, alright, for this first cycle, we are gonna be in these places. These on cycle two. It's not gonna be just, oh, when our fifth grade class of boys comes up, let's see how they're doing, you know, it's, we'd just be looking at phasing it out, so it is structured, so they can say, alright, X year, we know that we're gonna be together and. Yeah, some of that was just, some of that spurred out of conversation with some of our coaches that are just.
And I think it might be easier for the public to kind of swallow anyway.
I just want them to feel like I'm in the same situation.
Yeah, yeah.
Let's just, yeah, I agree with that a hundred percent, but I understand, maybe it's easier for both communities, they just kind of step this anyway.
So like if you add football, let's say, and not wrestling, then it doesn't bump our wrestling up to speed, we just keep our wrestling the same?
Right.
But if we add wrestling, then it bumps your wrestling to speed?
Yeah.
Per se. Or whatever sport.
That's a good example.
If you don't add one sport, even, that sport will stay the same.
Correct, it's whatever sport.
That's a, that's a year to year classification too.
Right, only, yeah, only on football, football's two-year classification, everything else is one.
It's a bigger commitment.
The tough call is though, if they need to join our wrestling program.
And they don't.
And they, well, and, and we look at it, well, jeez, if we join, they join and we bump up and we make the decision, we don't wanna do it because we don't wanna bump up, and then we let them sit because.
Yeah.
Well, I think that's where the, the fear.
That's what, that's what happened with Wausau.
Right.
And we don't wanna do that to them.
If they know that, if they know that's the plan.
Well, I mean, we look at it like, we love to have, you know, we don't wanna jump a class this year.
They, that's, that's not, that's not what our intentions is.
I think that it's just gonna be really open-minded, clear conversation with boundaries and saying, hey, I'm not comfortable with this, no ego in this, but we all need to look forward to the future. And make decisions on what's best for long-term, and so. Doing what's fair, I guess.
I think the tie, and the tie of co-op together on a football vote is a big act. I think you could, you, you ease into it.
I think this signifies the intention.
Based on, based on needs and when you both sides.
Okay.
You schedule an August patron meeting then?
Well, maybe September if it's, we're, I mean, that gives us a little more.
Good time, obviously, that's coming up pretty quick.
Well, in August, they don't have any time, they really haven't even hardly practiced together.
Maybe they give us a little, if we have that extra month.
Yeah.
Quite, so.
Yeah.
Football, or, or, or. And the, you know, A Ds and the principals can kind of put together some kind of timeline, like we're, we can talk about that the next time the committee gets together if you. On, you know, within each, this sport and this cycle, you know, type of.
Has really been attended a patron meeting in September.
Yeah, it's potentially, and I guess I'm here, just have the play review board for now in our community, instead of a joint meeting.
I think even if we just have the play review board, it's still gonna turn into, the people are gonna bring up the facility there.
Well, I think he'd weigh it well.
Okay, and I think it's fair for him too, because honestly, I've been, we're trying, we're saying we're running out of room and he can build, but then we're gonna bring more kids, like, you know, I mean, he can send some extra message to him. And also, if we would long-term, if this would work out, it's not really fair to, to our taxpayers that we put forty million dollar burden on them and they come over and enjoy new school with, with the middle taxes involved.
Yeah, with however, with that meeting goes, anyway, we're gonna have to make sure that it stays focused anyway on just the co-op, well, it's, it's not, we don't wanna have a three-hour meeting and going off into the weeds about facilities.
Well, just structure your agenda that way.
Correct.
That, that's what authorizes you to stay focused.
Yep, thank you. That's right.
So just schedule that meeting next week, our next meeting in August, then we'll, we'll set our turn and meeting.
Yeah, we'll try and come up with a date.
Add that to our agenda.
We'll probably just have a, a meeting just with that on the agenda, right?
Mm-hmm.
So it's like, like a twelve hours.
Yeah.
I covered most of it.
So on the, on that, on the, back to the bowling. We were talking about us adding unified bowling, but staying separate on the group. And then we needed to wait until Osmond determined if they wanted to add bowling to their offerings. Because if they did, then we have a coach that would be very interested in a, in a co-op with them, so we'd have a full team if they added. But we don't call it that, we don't know where they're at yet.
I think they were talking about that at this month's meeting.
Uh, discussed in July, action item in August. Another thing we talked about was church nights. They, their junior high typically practiced during school. Um, so when they had their church nights, they went immediately after school. Their church leadership over there was already looking at changing, uh, their schedule up. And, uh, now that this, if the junior highs went on, I think they're gonna try to accommodate for that and make it later in the evening, kind of like we do. Six thirty, seven o'clock.
Is that gonna be a tough thing?
What's that?
To reschedule that.
They were already looking at.
Oh, they're already doing it?
They were already looking at doing it, um, as something different, and they said that they'd talked with the, the church leadership and they were all for this and whatever's best for the kids, so. Something like that was gonna be fine.
Okay, great.
Anything else on that? Okay. Move on then to number twelve, the board policy, panel five oh three and five oh four.
Hey, you've got a new policy, ten five oh three, which is on your list below, uh, parent and family involvement in the schools, I mean, this is required by law for you to review, uh, annually, so it's kind of, it's on your agenda twice. And so the new policy, this new policy includes, uh, parents' rights to inspect library material, so it changed look just a little bit, I think you have a red line copy, um, deep in your packet, but. Uh, again, look at, you know, all the legal references and, and cross-sections, so, uh, obviously been, you know, just a lot of conversation in recent years, certainly about parental, parental rights and, and their child's education. Uh, you know, when, oftentimes, I said as many, when, when we hear that here, we're like, what's the, what's the big problem? What's the big problem? Uh, and the main reason we don't hear a lot about it is because we have such a great relationship with our stakeholders, with our parents, primarily trust. They know their children's teachers, they know them well, they, they generally, uh, respect, trust, love their children's teachers and their schools, so. You know, we, it, it's just rare that we have somebody that is like, what are you teaching my kid, what are they being exposed to, you know, those kinds of things, you know? How do I interact with coaches, teachers, administrators and so on, uh, what are the avenues? Um, it just really isn't an issue in a small rural school, one of the great benefits of a small, uh, rural school and, which are, which is mostly the case in Nebraska. So, parent involvement in schools is something that we have to, um, review, uh, annually, uh, and again, that's your last action item, go ahead and approve the new language for this. Uh, the other one is your bullying policy, which, uh, has to be reviewed annually. I don't know, I could let Kyle and Jen maybe speak a little more to this, it's, again, it's. It, it's rare that we kind of have a flare up with that word, bullying. Uh, now, we, we do hear it every year for sure, to, to be clear. But we, we also try to make sure that we're calling whatever behavior it is, we're calling it what it is, because if a kid got cut in line at lunch, that doesn't always mean it's bullying. Or if during some, uh, football game at recess, a kid gets pushed down, that's not, you know, and we may, you know, so it's, it, it can be, it can be really, really difficult, as you might imagine. To try to have that conversation with a parent who says, my kid's being bullied at school. Well, really, we wanna know what, what's, what's going on, and we wanna verify that as well. You know, so we have, we do have these conversations throughout the year, uh, for sure, and, uh, I think our, our teachers, our supervisors, our administrators. Uh, handle it very, very well most all the time, I think it's rare, you guys would know, if it rises to you, if, if you're getting calls that we've got bullying in the school and nothing's being done about it. Which is a common refrain oftentimes in schools. You know, and again, we, we, yeah, that's important, we want kids to be treated with respect, we don't want anyone to be targeted. Uh, but oftentimes, it's kind of a random event, not a targeted and routine, which now we're kind of talking about the definition of bullying. Somebody being targeted and having it be repeated, uh, not just a one-time event, which could be worse, you know, that could be, you know, abuse, I mean, if some kid gets beat up, that's not necessarily bullying, that's abuse, you know, that's a, you know, that's a law enforcement issue too. So we, we kind of talk about this every year, but I, I guess I just, uh, open it up to any questions or comments or concerns that you may have with regard to this overarching. Policy or concern in our schools.
No changes, that's the same as.
No changes, in language.
The change is just that it has to be reviewed annually.
Correct. It brings to you every July.
Looks good. Okay, um, then we'll go to, um, the discussion about the new practice field, we moved up an action item to discussion item.
So we had some phone calls on this.
Well, some of the things we've heard that, you know.
I didn't get anything, so I'm, I'm asking.
Some things we've heard that, you know, the land to the west where the, towards the parking lot was donated by the P B C F with the intent on having a building built first. And then obviously, there's gonna be a parking lot out there somewhere, but they would like to have a building, what I was told, my dad, on the committee, you know, that they would like to have a building there first before they, I mean, I don't, I don't want to speak long with the city, but where this is, you know, putting a street in and parking lot, how that sits with the P B C F. And then the fact that, uh, the practice field, you know, the schools don't own that, that's the city's land, so just a few things that, and then another comment I heard was, you know. Where our, our, uh, public opinion poll came when we did the bond, you know, where athletics sat on the, on the results that we got back, and it was in the fourth or fifth position. You know, maybe money would be spent better somewhere else, but now that's dealing with the bond, not so much if we don't, we, we have, we've got a need for somewhere for them to practice, but, uh, you know, maybe, maybe they get by for a while longer until this. Kind of sorts of self-out what's going on with the few. So just, you know, that type of thing, but what I heard.
You know, with the document showing where the school had sold that land to the city, right, for a few bucks. But the provision in there was that we had the right to use it, was that in there?
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure.
Use it, but did it say improve it?
Yeah.
I don't know.
Yeah, that's my understanding is, is, yeah, we could use the land, but then we get into its city ground, and so do we have the right to terrify it to start building on it?
Yeah. Yep, that was my question initially, was how that works, but at the same, on the same note, we're using a baseball field, we could get kicked off there anytime the city.
That, and we've, uh, you can't tell that the city won't, or the little kids won't play soccer on that football field and drill it.
Right. Oh, that would be the plan.
We talk all the time about working together with the, with the city.
That's right, that's right, I mean, if we would, we would move a soccer field over there.
Yeah, and I'd be right with two soccer fields.
Yep, that would be the plan, because that's currently parking. And we have football plays on the region outfield destroys it. We go play soccer on the softball field and the baseball field and destroy them. Uh, I'd love to get a soccer field off one of the soft fields, just to not be tearing up our baseball fields or softball fields. So, yeah, the, the city club teams would be using that space as well.
So at that point, you'd wanna, might cost share it, you know, otherwise, you know, the schools create the complete burden of maintaining and building.
Yeah, that, that could all be, yeah. It, yeah, it wouldn't be just a football practice field, in my mind, I don't know, maybe Kyle was hoping that would be the case, but, I mean, I was thinking, would we move a soccer field or two over there? And then, because I heard the thing about the parking over there on the west side, well, that's a long ways for grandma to walk, you know, to the soccer fields, well, we'd pave Lincoln Street.
There's a whole bunch of parks.
Right, then you park on Lincoln Street and there's a soccer field right there.
You're gonna be fighting the football park on those days.
Yeah. Well, yeah, because if, if we move the parking over the west side and our soccer fields all stay where they're at, yeah, for, for most people it's fine, but for a few, that's a little longer walk to get there, but.
There's still be a handful of handicap spots up close.
Yeah, you could figure it out, people drive their side-by-sides in there still, you know, you figure it out.
Right, before we're right up to the.
But, either way, we could put our soccer field over there too, and, I mean, I could, I was looking at putting these little wheels on the goals, you know, and I could pull that thing right over to the fence line. So it's out of the way for football practice, and when Saturday morning comes, I'll pull it back over there or whatever. It wouldn't be a big deal, but it'd be utilized by multiple groups. But, I, I, I had the same call too.
Yeah, but the, uh, as far as, you know, I can speak to the region outfield anyway, you know, it, you might go get by it this year, anyway, but we do have to, to get a high school co-op to football. We're talking forty-five boys out to football. It's not gonna work. And we have twenty-five, thirty boys right now, tear the heck out of it, it's barely enough for them to fit an adequate eight-man rack.
It didn't work while we were in high school.
Eleven man, won't work.
They can't, there's just no practicing on that hard area right now.
It's not, we, we go try walking across.
Yeah, it was pretty crappy when we were, it was terrible, and we practiced them.
They just don't, you can't do it, you're gonna sustain more injuries.
Concrete, you got the Jessica stuff in there.
Yeah. I had that question, why can't you practice over there, you used to, like, chains, I used to, you know, when I, when we did, that was a soccer field.
Yes, right.
And it wasn't part of the field. There was, it was nice grass, since then, it has gotten driven on and parked on for years and years and years, and there are ruts this deep out there and all the water just sits there. You can't walk out there without blowing something out, um, so it's just in a different, it's in a different condition than it used to be. So, yeah, it's, it's not the same, you can't practice out there the way it is right now. But. Yeah, I don't know if that's a discussion that we need to, or the administration needs to have with the city or.
We don't really have any other land that the school owns, so that we could, like, where the playground is or something, we could build a practice field and do it, and we probably don't have any, we're picking up. Right, just having all that, it's all those trees and stuff around involved.
And it's been, shit, twenty years since us here, we don't practice on the football field, there's no, that's just untouched.
It's like walk-through Thursday and then usually.
I remember doing drills and shit on the football field.
Yeah.
At some point, you gotta be utilizing, otherwise that football.
We did it on like Thursdays.
Yeah, Thursdays and sometimes Mondays.
Yeah.
You utilize it when you can.
This year, and it'll be complete dirt by next year, and I'll ask for dirt.
The top of the crown will be gone anyway.
Because we, we practice on Thursdays out there, and that's it, and then we play junior high J D games Monday, varsity games on Friday, and if it, we've been fortunate. It hasn't rained and we haven't played in the mud yet, I mean, the E B game was the one.
Yep.
Uh, but other than that, I mean, and it's still pretty rough shape by the end of the year.
Just that limited exposure.
I know we've had, uh, you know, like press box issues on the list, you know, for quite some time, I guess, it's just, this wasn't on the list and then all of a sudden it's on the list right away, I just think maybe it's, it's alright to slow play just a little bit, see how it turns out. We don't wanna, we don't wanna get in trouble with the city or the P B C F, screw up their plans, but I, I, I agree, it's probably a need, and it also lets us get that out there, that it is something that we need.
And it benefits the community as well.
Right, where you can, where you could move the soccer, you know, fields onto that, dual purpose it a little bit would, would make more sense.
There really isn't any other option here, unfortunately, as far as a practice field for a football team. There, the other option, right?
Go up with Osmond, they go to Osmond's field to practice every day.
Well, that would, that would be one, I wasn't thinking that, but the, the most expensive option, right? Which is what we talked about, would be, would be turf on the current football field and you can practice on it every day. But we're worried about seventy thousand dollars, we're really gonna be worried about one point two million people, that's what it was, right? That's not.
And we just put sprinklers on the field.
Yeah, right, we just spent, yeah, sprinklers and.
Did a lot of work doing that anyway.
This is by far the, the most efficient use of all of our money, but I, I understand if we're stepping on toes, we better slow play it.
Yeah.
But just how, how, how much longer we have to slow play it.
Yeah, I feel like the boards before us have probably been saying that. Cause I, I know people bitched when we were in high school about how bad we tore it up.
So, I don't know who needs to talk to who, I mean, I spoke with Jeremy this weekend about it and he seemed like he was on for that, but he, he also kind of echoed that there were some concerns, maybe not from the city side, but maybe from the community center group.
And I guess with that, I'm sorry to interrupt you, what needs to be understood here is that Jeremy is the city administrator, this is a city council decision, not Jeremy's.
Right, yeah, he, yeah, and maybe, maybe the city council doesn't all agree, he made it sound like the city was on board with all of that.
The city council members were unaware.
Okay.
So we need to take that initiative, if you have any guidance on who should be there to take that initiative to talk to the city council, because it is not a city administrator.
That's what I was trying to figure out, cause if we are gonna do it this year, the best time would be seeding grass in September, so that we can utilize it next spring. Uh, the seeding grass is what's in my head, if we wait, then you might be setting back for a while, but. Uh, maybe you could do some spring seeding in the, in the fall, but that's not ideal, that's, that wouldn't be great. You can't spend the money on the seed. And if we do it this fall, we could utilize it in the spring for soccer or track. That's probably the main two things.
If you're gonna do anything in the spring, it better be sod.
Yeah, that's, that's a lot more.
What is the best way to move forward with the city?
Well, I, I think just ask, you know, Mr. Tard to communicate with the mayor to include that on the city council discussion, potentially an action item for them to authorize school use. Now, we've been using city property for decades, I don't think we need their authorization to use city property, but we sure might do it in the past.
Right.
I mean, it, it would freak you up and, and then, okay, is this gonna be a, a school expense? If it's a shared expense, that'll slow things down.
Yeah.
But I, I think the ball needs to be in, in their court and they may have to have conversations with the PBCF leadership as well. But I would guess that the city council has, has taken a phone call or two, as you have, about this.
Well, they were blindsided.
So it's, I think it's definitely on their radar as a discussion that they probably don't need myself or Mr. Tard to say, hey, we need to talk about this. So I, I would expect that it will now be a joint conversation in your separate meetings. For sure ideally resolved this fall, so it, we're, we're one, one more year undone on your baseball field, on the city's baseball field. Again, I think Chance is probably right, it's probably been talked about many times over the decades, is there a solution here? And then we just don't have the footprint, right, we're like, no, we don't, we really don't have a solution. And it's become a much bigger issue because of a great reason, and that's the activity down at the ball fields, which kinda went, I think, maybe into a valley for many, many years and just, they're just, we didn't have the, the traffic down there, foot traffic or car traffic. And both those things are so vibrant now, it's just, it's hard to coexist.
When is the next city council meeting?
Well, it's generally the second, Tuesday after our board.
Yeah.
Oh, it's the last of August month, we're all.
Well, I would suggest that you at least be at the next city council meeting, so one of the two of you or both of you can be there and, and address the scene and say, hey, this is, let them know everything you just let us know. I would like to be in attendance to that also.
Yeah, I just wanna, whoever, whoever needs to be a part of the conversation, let's make sure we have that figured out. Make sure everybody's aware of what the actual situation is.
Can I ask a question?
Of course, go ahead.
Who owns the land that when we come like football games, when we're, we've got a lot of, you know, and we park out in that field, who owns that?
The city.
The city, would they sell it?
That's.
Is it Ashoff on that?
I think it's being developed, it's being developed for housing.
It's debatable who owns that.
So that's not accessible for, for school use.
You said it's debatable?
Yeah, it's a long, it's a long story.
There's an ordinance on the city books selling it to Jim Ashoff twenty years ago.
Yeah, so, but the city's developing it, yeah, I think just matter of fact, it's city property, but if it came right down to it, I think some lawyers might give it all, but there's digging going on there now. And if somebody doesn't want that digging to be going on, I would guess, but the city's moving forward on, on developing that space. They've let us use it for parking.
Yeah, I was aware that Brooke has a pretty knowledgeable history with running the paper and everything, so what did you say, Brooke?
There's an ordinance that was passed by the city selling that land to Jim Ashoff twenty years ago.
I used to bale the hay off of it for, for Jim.
It may or may not have gotten put through the county, but that doesn't change the ordinance and the ownership of it. I was told this morning that perhaps somebody might remember Jim giving it back to the city at some point, but that's not written down anywhere and there was no exchange of money and that's, you know, I like Jim just so much, the next person, but that's not necessarily a Jim thing to do, so.
No exchange indeed, right?
Not back to the city that anybody could find, no. And the school, the city is only working on the road, they're not developing anything here because.
They're putting, they're putting in sewer cause they're gonna paint pine and they don't want to run the risk of four years down the road, they have to knock out the pavement on pine to put in sewers, so they're just covering their bases.
Yeah. Thank you.
All that area, there's kinda a lot of.
There's a lot of gray area.
A lot of stuff going on, so I just feel like no one, just jump right.
Yeah.
Without, without going through the proper chain.
Well, maybe the best move is just we go up to the city council meeting and just kinda tell them what.
Yeah.
Where we're at, where we're at with it.
And you would be willing to do that and tell them everything you just pulled out?
Yeah, well, I said, I'll go over there and just tell them where we're at.
I would like to do also, okay?
Where are we at on that, cause we're still financially, I mean, we've won it, we could, are we there that we're okay?
It is not an action item, so we can't take a vote on it, we can't say you had your name on this. So, we're gonna have to deal it out, find our, we'll talk to the city and let them do it. So, maybe they're gonna, I don't know.
Right on, we said where we're at on it, I guess we're.
I'm saying where we're at in terms of the school situation, in terms of numbers, where they practice, how they're tearing up the field, the soccer program, the, the track program, you know, it's not just, hey, the school needs this for football, or hey, the soccer team, whatever it's, it's, there's a lot of moving parts to it that would all benefit from that space.
I mean, it's not just the school's long-term goal, it's the city's long-term goals as well, we don't have to be on the same page.
Yeah, and the paving of the street, how that's affecting it, you know, yeah, there's a lot going on there.
Okay.
Thank you all.
Yep, move on to action items, number thirteen, taking, discuss, take possible actions, doing an interlocal agreement with the city of Navy for the paving of Lincoln.
So procedurally, you know, of course, both the council and the school board have approved this joint project. And boy, I sure like to see some action down there. Have barricaded it up.
I, that was Tuesday, on Tuesday they turned the water off, so if anything going down.
Yeah, okay, good.
So it's happening, I think.
That's what I think is happening, so, um, as you guys know, I mean, obviously.
I don't have water, I don't have bathrooms.
Oh, they were waiting for your last game.
Well, that, I thought that possibly wasn't gonna be my last game anyway, but it's fine, well, it's, it's fine, really, it's okay.
Bring your board party.
It's okay, it is.
Yes, okay, so obviously a, a significant investment in the community and a great project for school and community to join together to, to get done. Probably another thing that's been talked about for years and years and years, so pretty exciting to see the, the, the movement on this. So an interlocal agreement, which just kinda protects both parties.
We've already talked about this quite there, right?
Yes, yes.
I'll make a motion to approve the interlocal cooperation agreement between the city and the school district for the paving of Lincoln Avenue. I'll second. Okay, I guess I would, is there, we wanna talk about the finance.
Yeah, I would, I would.
I mean, if there's multiple ways. We talked about this like fifteen.
Well, we've gotten in generalities.
Yeah, well, when the bill, when the bill comes to.
Might have Dr. Olson.
Yeah, when the bill comes to, you've got several options on where, what, what fund or collection of funds you can use. General fund dollars through the depreciation fund would be a source. Flex dollars in your CDs that you have could be a source, could be part of a bond issue, that's probably not a, a real viable option. A special building fund, it would be an appropriate source, maybe your best source is, you know, we're improving the existing site, the existing school facility site. So there obviously you have levying authority to, to pay for that. So, and you could do a variety of, of any of those, you know, it would just be part of your, part of your budget.
Does it all need to be part of the same budget here, can we spread this out?
Yeah, you can, you can have some in this cycle.
I don't know if we can, because it says when the bill comes due, we pay it in thirty days.
Oh, is it?
Okay. It says approved invoices within thirty days of receipt, that we pay.
Then it all gets done now.
We pay it all at once.
Yeah, but you could, you could use some funds from, from one fund and then, and then use building fund dollars in the next budget cycle to pay that general fund back.
Can we, can we use building fund dollars on land that we don't own, cause the street we don't own?
We're only pay, we're paying for just the north, the south half of Lincoln Avenue.
Which we technically own to the.
I wonder on that because again, it says we equally share the costs of paving Lincoln Avenue from Main Street to Pine Street, as well as Pine Street from Lincoln Avenue to Park Avenue.
Yeah.
So it's saying we, we foot half this bill.
We, we are footing half the bill.
Of everything.
We are putting, we are footing half the bill of everything, but half of Lincoln, if you split Lincoln down the middle, between gate to gate, our half on the south is significantly more than the half of Lincoln on, on the north.
Cause they're gonna pay all the way up to that, the gates.
I realized that.
So we don't, we don't have it down to a dollar, Justin, it's, it's true. So to determine precisely what the north half of Lincoln, I'm sorry, the south half of Lincoln, up to our gates, the spillways, to determine what that would be in, in, in work, concrete work, contract labor, dirt work and all of that, is just, you know, they're not gonna figure that out for us, contractors aren't gonna be able to keep track, I spent this much time on this side of the street, there's this much on that side of the street. So when looking at the plans.
But, but you've figured it out.
Well, yeah.
Cause you said it's fifty percent.
Fifty, well, that, that is what Mr. Tard proposed.
So it can be figured out, cause I mean, at some point you look at it like, oh, it's not fifty percent, we should foot forty percent of this bill. So I mean, at some point you have, this decision's been made that you've quantified how much that hundred.
Yes, and I presented that to you and.
That's what he's talking about.
Yeah.
We're doing more kind of great work on that.
No, I know that, I know that.
And we, and we talked about this like two or three months in the room, about, I don't know, I don't remember what month exactly it was, but.
Yeah.
And then that's when we talked about how it was gonna be from the middle of the street all the way to the football field and the track, and that's significantly bigger, and that's why they just figured, like when they did their little rough estimates, like fifty-fifty is a pretty equal-ish.
Realistically, Lincoln, we should be paying more than fifty percent of it.
Yeah, we're gonna be paying like seventy-five percent.
By far the longest stretch, we should be paying two-thirds of that.
Yeah, you would, you would pay for your half of your side.
Our ownership line, yeah, and it's, but it's a lot more on the north side towards the school. So we should be paying for, let's say, two-thirds of that. Yeah, two-thirds of that, so that's where they came up with the fifty, cause Ross can handle it.
So we kinda came in an agreement with the city and us, that we just made it.
I mean, there's multiple ways we can finance it, if it does all come due at once, we can still take care of that.
It is at once, right, I mean, it's not a question, right?
Wasn't there something in there?
Cause I mean, the language should tell us when we have to cut this check.
I saw Jeremy in the hallway prior to the meeting, why is he not here, where is he?
Yeah, it is, right.
I don't know.
Says there'd be upon invoice.
Because he, it would be very helpful if he was here to answer these questions.
The motion that we made two months ago, it was the fifty percent of eight hundred seventy-five thousand, forty-one dollars and fifty cents. That's where on the hook board, we made the motion, okay? That's roughly what's gonna be about four cents on the levy.
You can't levy, this isn't here, it just says no additional tax should be levied.
We, we get all of our.
It says no additional tax should be levied, collected or accounted under this.
Every, every budget cycle will levy, so how else can we get paid?
That's, I don't know, maybe liquidate our CDs.
We've, we've, we've got, we've got general fund dollars for operational expenses or, or contract maintenance and repair. Uh, we've got two hundred forty thousand dollars in special building funds and I think that, that is usable for site improvement.
We don't, we didn't have much on the list in addition to that.
No, building grounds is not identified any, anything, you know, precise for it, but I think we had this in mind a year ago. But there was precise conversation about, well, the, the monies for building fund will be there, cause we started Lincoln Street, Lincoln having a conversation over a year ago.
I thought it was closer than two years ago.
Well, the real momentum, I think, began, yes, a, a year ago.
So just, I'm seeing this says, oh, the school shall reimburse the city for its fifty percent share of the approved invoices within thirty days of receipt of an invoice from the city.
Right.
So that's once we get the invoice from the city, whenever that is.
So the city's gonna pay the contract, we don't have to write a check to the county.
The city's a bond, there's, yeah, it's a bond.
So the city bonds that are full amount and we reimburse the city?
No, no, the city is only borrowing five hundred thousand, that's already been done.
Okay.
Sorry, didn't mean to.
Sorry, that's fine, thank you, that's good to know, thanks.
We're reimbursing the cities. How does contract reads?
Financial, how are we gonna look after we spend four, four hundred five thousand dollars? Do we pull that out of what we have, how's that gonna set us free?
Well, we, in September, we pass it, but.
So, we budget for it, but we can't, the agreement says we can't raise our taxes, we can't because of this.
I don't know if that's how much.
They're doing it, they did it that way, because Chance had brought up a concern that why are people who don't live in town, why would they be taxed for that, that was the discussion was a year ago, I believe, that the budget would be, right? Like, this is a town issue, not a county, not the, or not the whole district, right? Am I understanding that correctly?
I don't, I'm not sure. Just the only thing that says it. Is that saying like tax levy income or is that saying? I'm thinking of it as sales.
It just says no additional tax, that's all tax.
I, I think that that's saying that they can't charge, just like an ag.
No, I know, I, I know.
I don't think that's saying anything about how we can.
On the sale of the.
On the sale of the, on the sale, they can't charge any additional tax because it's the city pling, it's the pling of the district. I, I don't think that has anything to do with how we come up with them.
Well, I think we want to get legal answer on that one.
I, I did run this by our legal counsel, they, they didn't suggest that, you see, this is why in small town, sometimes, sometimes you can do things with a handshake, even if it's as expensive as, as this is, you know, you trust, city trusts school, school trusts city. But now we've got a legal document and now we've got that, we paid lawyers to write, now we're gonna go pay lawyers to interpret it. But now we've got a legal document, and now we've got that, we paid lawyers to write, now we're going to go pay lawyers to interpret it for us, and, you know, maybe complicate an issue that maybe didn't need to be complicated. And I don't mean to suggest that hundreds of thousands of dollars and how it's going to be paid for, but we've, we've had projects well over that, that, you know, we budget for, we plan for, we pay for, whether it's been lease purchase or whether it's been over a year or two of levy in the special building fund. So, I, I just, you know. From my perspective, we can pay the bill when it comes due, and we can pay it through a variety of means, through a variety of funds, if you will.
Because you said we have over two hundred forty thousand in the special building fund.
Yes, and that was on a two cent levy this year, and so, and.
Because we lowered that levy this year, right? And then we put more towards the general fund, because we weren't anticipating any real big, huge.
Yeah, that's why your general fund has such a strong balance right now, to make sure we pay a little over the summer company, but.
It's been looked over by two lawyers. They've agreed to do this a couple of months ago.
But the lawyers aren't telling us how to pay for it though.
No.
We've got to figure out how we're going to pay for this.
We've got to. Method of how much from where.
That's a question. That was the one we've heard for several years. The, this agreement's not allowing us to do that, so that's why we're having some others.
Mr. Res, Mr. Res.
Hi. Hey, I just, the city advertising the paving project, and they had that in the paper. Now, was the paving project, is that all their paving, is that Pine and Lincoln?
It says this, this covers Lincoln Avenue from Main Street to.
Their local agreement does, but if you're paying whatever they're advertising for their half, are you paying half of Pine also?
Yes.
No.
Paying half of that whole.
We're not, we're paying half.
Seven-five thousand, forty-one dollars.
We're paying Pine Street, Pine Street from Lincoln to Harper Avenue, so we are paying a portion of Pine Street.
Not, 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 not really. I mean.
We are. It's half.
We are.
But if they're paying part of Pine, the school has no business paying part of it.
We're not.
I don't, I, I, I wasn't if Darren, I said if.
I don't, I don't know how to explain it. We, if we pay, you know, we may pay for more than half the project, if we want to figure out what half of Lincoln is to the south, that might be more than half.
Yeah.
So, saying we're each in fifty-fifty, I think it's just a good community connection. It might be different by ten thousand dollars this way or that way, I don't know, who could possibly figure it out, but if they do, they might say, you know what? The south half of Lincoln is sixty-two percent of the project. If somebody could figure that out, then we're paying sixty-two percent of the total bill rather than fifty percent.
And when we started this discussion, we thought our half was going to be over a million dollars, and it's, the whole project, we were estimating it to be like a two million dollar project, weren't we?
One point five.
Was it, was it a year ago, engineer feasibility?
Yeah. This came in significantly lower than that.
Well, we've got a motion in the second. To approve the. Interlocal law agreement between the city and the school district for paving Lincoln. Had some discussion. Should we go ahead and vote? Chance?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
Wyatt?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Justin?
No.
Melissa?
Yes.
Okay, motion carried, five to one.
I'm just hoping they don't get finances.
Yeah. All right, let's move on to number fifteen. Discuss take possible action regarding NSAA unified building. Which we've kind of explained earlier.
I'll make a motion to approve the addition of unified bowling as an NSAA offered activity at the high school level.
Okay, I'll second that. Moving in second to approve the addition of unified bowling as NSAA activity at the high school. Discussion. I'll vote myself, yes. Wyatt?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
Chance?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
The motion carried six zero. Number sixteen, discuss and take possible action appointing Dr. Darren Arl as state and federal programs director for the district.
Definitely. I'll make a motion to, to appoint Dr. Darren Arl as district, state and federal programs director for the district.
I'll second.
Moving in second to appoint Dr. Darren Arl as states, district, state and federal programs director for the district. Myself, yes. Justin?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
Chance?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
Wyatt?
Yes.
Motion carried, six oh. Number seventeen, discuss and take possible action on adopting the student parent handbooks for twenty-five, twenty-six.
I'll make a motion to approve the handbooks for twenty-five, twenty-six.
I'll second that.
Are they sharing anything?
Yeah, do you have anything to share regarding changes in the handbook?
No, the only thing that I would say on behalf of elementary is there were a few things that came up during the school year that I did not have in my handbook, I just echo what Kyle uses in the high school. So, and then there was just a few concerns with lunch. We had several microwave incidences this year, and so my staff just felt like it would be best that we avoid the microwave used by elementary kids altogether. And so that's probably the one thing that parents might.
And they can, they can ask an adult if they need it, right?
Well, we are just not using it all in the elementary. That's what.
What were they using in the elementary?
We were burning, burning cheese. And it smelled like our school was on fire, not just once or twice, but half a dozen times.
Yeah, I wish we could assign a parrot to the microwave, you know, so it, and sometimes they're around the house.
Laura Alexander would be glad.
Yeah.
I'm sure, I've heard her say that before.
Yeah, well, and I think that.
Probably the Alexander, probably anyway.
One of the cooks, not to be named, one of their children blew it up one day too, so I mean.
I have an idea.
I know, it, it might cause a minor burden for some people who just like to send a cold leftover, you know, so we're going to try to communicate Jen well, of course, the best she can, you know, warm it up, put it to thermos, it'll be good at eleven fifteen, I, you know, so.
Well, and Jen and Kyle are both aware, I read that handbook every year, and I picked it apart a couple of times, that's why I made the motion so quickly. Thank you guys for doing a great job, like, doing, enforcing this stuff. Yeah.
As we kind of mentioned every year too, I'm sorry, I don't just say, you know, the handbook is not necessarily a policy document, people think, hey, it's written in the handbook, and sometimes it references policy, and there are some things, but generally, it's a practicality, things, you know, informational schedules, communication avenues and such. But the handbook doesn't prohibit an administrator from taking a certain action that's maybe not written there. They also do have, and they do want it to be rare, if they do something that says, well, the handbook says you're going to do this, and you did it that way. That happens from time to time, and based on circumstances, you use professional judgment on those things. It's rare, but occasionally, you get somebody that comes up and says, handbook says, you know, and that can be delicate, and we try to obviously manage it as best we can, so that you don't hear about it, but I'll attempt to do.
Okay, well, we've been moved in second then to approve the building handbooks for twenty-five, twenty-six. I'll vote myself, yes. Wyatt?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
Chance?
Yes.
Melissa? Yes.
And Justin?
Yes.
Motion carried, six oh. Number eighteen, discuss take possible action renewing the NERSA membership for twenty-five, twenty-six, the amount of eight hundred fifty dollars. Motion for that?
I'll make a motion to approve the annual NERSA membership dues in the amount of eight hundred fifty dollars.
I'll second.
Moving in second to, to approve annual NERSA membership dues, the amount of eight hundred fifty. Myself, yes. Justin?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
Chance?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
Wyatt?
Yes.
And we're into number nineteen, where we discuss, consider taking all necessary action with regard to selecting the construction manager at risk method of construction delivery for potential elementary, high school additions and renovations project under the political subdivision, subdivisions, construction alternatives act.
So you're, you're selecting an avenue, and it's an important decision, but I think you've been moving in this direction for months and months and months. Now to make it official and formal, that you're going to be with the CM at our process for your pre-bond work. Bringing a CM on board, as Bob has told you, will really help to facilitate identifying the full scope and a very narrow range then, because right now, we've got a pretty wide range, eight to forty. But a CM will really help, working with our committee and Bob, our architect.
Well, this reduces your risk too on, on additional expenditure. Yeah, it sounds like it's about the only way.
You may have some expense, this hasn't been discussed yet formally or officially, you may have, a CM that you choose may ask for a nominal amount. That bond passes, if the bond doesn't pass, they still get ten grand or something for the work that they're going to do over the course of that month. So that, that will be coming, that's just kind of a heads up, that's pretty standard, pretty routine, but that's probably maybe in next month, once you select a CM.
When you say nominal, you're like thinking ten grand or less?
I'm thinking ten. He said, he said the low is ten, the high is fifteen, so that's a pretty small range, yes, maybe a max of fifteen, you could be out if a bond doesn't pass. So if a bond doesn't pass, you probably don't offer him, okay, well, we tried, we'll wait another fifty years. So your CM is probably still on board after that, but they're going to do a whole heck of a lot of work between now and March vote, and then hopefully, a tremendous amount of work for the next two years.
So the CM, if a bond doesn't pass this year, we have to, maybe another ten or fifteen to run it again, right? They don't stay on?
I, that I don't know, Justin, whether it's.
It's similar to the municipal advisor. Right, so I was wondering if it's similar to municipal advisors, if they just stayed on one time fee, and then they just stay on, so.
Yeah, they'll try to. Yeah, they, they don't expect you to give up, they help you to wiggle usually down, and that'd be part of a scope of project that they would want to be part of as well. So I think, I think once you start, whether it takes one time or two time, now it's up to you, if you fail once, you may say, anyway, I had a bad experience with this one, you may go to a different CM. But you will have some extents with your CM to help you.
I'll make a motion to approve the construction manager at risk method of construction for the potential elementary and high school additions and renovations project under the political subdivision construction alternatives act.
I'll second.
Okay, then moved in second to approve the CM at risk method of construction for potential elementary and high school additions and renovations project under the political subdivisions, construction alternatives. Way to vote, Melissa?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Wyatt?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
Chance?
Yes.
Motion carried, six oh. Let's see, where we at? Number twenty-one. Discuss, consider and take all necessary action with regard to appointing members to the CM at risk selection committee for potential elementary and high school additions and renovations project.
Are we in? I'm in twenty, I'm sorry.
And I missed one, twenty. Yeah, I'm sorry. They listed saying, they said number twenty. Discuss, consider and take necessary action with regard to adopting the construction management risk selection criteria and evaluation point values for potential elementary and high school additions and renovations project.
You know, pretty, pretty standard, that chart that I shared with you, now you'll notice that you've got a total range of point values that add up to one sixty, so you're still going to wiggle that down to a hundred, so you're going to, you know, this one could be twenty to thirty or whatever, a max, you have max amounts for that. Did I put that chart in there?
Yes.
Packet. Okay. In your folder or your packet? It's in your packet, yes. So that, that gives max amount, so some of them, you'll have to bring down a little bit, say you have a total of a hundred. But not, not to worry, I mean, I, I've stressed out about some of this too, I mean, that's a pretty doggone big decision, and then to try to create a rubric, because that's what this is, is a scoring rubric. You know, when you're talking twenty to twenty-five percent of a particular criteria, Bob will be on the committee, he will help facilitate and guide you through that. This, whatever you end up selecting based on this chart, is not automatically going to lean you in a direction of somebody that's not right for you. You, you will choose the person you feel is right for you, and you will have some empirical data from this rubric to help you do that, but, but you do need to approve a point value chart.
So we have to approve the chart, but we don't have to approve what?
Correct.
Point value we put yet?
Yeah, because notice on that chart, I think it says on the bottom left, that last one, it says not to exceed a hundred, or, or.
Yeah.
Is that right? Yes, so, so you'll bring your percentages, you'll bring some of those percentages down in your right column prior to your interviews.
The optional criteria, is that, are we voting on all that right now, or is that stuff will come up with?
That will come with, yeah.
Because we'll have the community committee.
Yes.
Here making that percentage decision, right? Like, we make the ultimate decision.
No, the ultimate, the board will make the ultimate decision, but the, your next motion, that committee is going to be making these point value decisions.
Okay.
Okay.
I, I wasn't sure if we had to do, get the point values down to what today you're.
I was hoping we wanted to.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve adopting the construction management at risk selection criteria and the evaluation point values for a potential elementary and high school additions and renovations project.
I'll second. So moved in second then to approve adopting CM at risk selection criteria and the evaluation point values for potential elementary and high school additions and renovations. Myself, yes. Justin?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
Chance?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
And Wyatt?
Yes.
Six oh. All right, now, twenty-one, I can read it again. Discuss, consider and take all necessary action with regard to appointing members to the CM at risk selection committee for a potential elementary and high school additions and renovations project. And we've kind of brainstormed some ideas, and I made some calls, and we got Seth Harder from Husker, he's willing to sit on this committee, he's got pretty good expertise working with contractors. Jeremy Tarr has also agreed to sit on it, and Travis Montgomery also has agreed to be on that committee, so. And I'm thinking the building and grounds committee will also make up the other three members, along with Dr. Arl, Bob, and the administrator, Jen and Kyle, if they won't be on there. About six to ten people on that committee.
Wasn't there a certain criteria that had to be on it? Am I missing somebody?
There, there isn't, I mean, he did mention some, he says, good to have a local contractor that has some of that, you know, so, you know. So he, there isn't anybody that precisely has to be on it, it was all recommendations.
Okay. And they were all very, 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 so, great, didn't have to talk them into it too bad. That's who we've got.
Yeah, do you have quick grant meeting, I think, to that, big question?
It's going to be in the, we've still got a little process, I think it'll end, it's going to be August, isn't it, before we start having meetings with?
Yeah, your RFP, now that you've approved it, your RFP is going to go out.
Got to go out.
Wednesday.
Yeah.
So things, I mean, and I've been receiving calls and emails from contractors, they know, they're like, Dr. Arl, when's that going to hit the paper? When's that going to hit the paper? So, talking to Derek, your RFP goes out on Wednesday, so at the, and then they've got thirty days to respond. And you heard Bob, he thinks we're going to have easily six, more likely, ten plus respondents, so.
It's mid-August then.
Yeah, I would anticipate that. Now, we've got a meeting, well, a meeting on the twenty-eighth, I assume, our fourth meeting, our fourth Monday of the month. I don't know, I don't have any anticipated action items on that, but obviously, we'll have discussion about the RFP responses that we have at that point. Keep our committee updated.
So I don't know if we need a, do we need a list of the members in that motion, or just approve the members?
We'll have it in minutes. If you want to repeat them though.
I think I've got them, Seth Harder, Jeremy Tarr, Travis Montgomery, everybody on the building and grounds committee, Dr. Arl, Bob, the architect, and possibly both principals. Is that, did I miss somebody?
I think that's, I think that's it.
Bob, the builder, Bob, the builder.
I'll make, I'll make a motion to approve the members on the selection committee as, as just presented.
Okay, we have a second.
I'll second that.
Moving in second to approve the members on the CM selection committee has presented. Myself, yes. Wyatt?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
Chance?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
Motion carried, six oh. Moving on to the reports, number twenty-three, the activity.
Policy.
Sorry, boss.
Yes, I, again, you, you can't pass these in batch, I trust that you've looked them over, I don't need to point your attention to any of them precisely, hey, here's one, because we've already reported on it. I don't need to point your attention to any of them precisely, hey, here's one that, cause we've already reported on it, but you can pass these in batch.
I'll make a motion to approve the revisions to all the listed policies.
I'll second.
Moving second then to approve the revisions to the listed policies. Self, yes. Justin?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
Chance?
Yes.
Kayden?
Yes.
Wyatt?
Yes.
Motion carried, six oh. Now we can move on to reports, sorry, activities director.
Uh, the only thing I was gonna tell you guys was next month I'm gonna look at drug testing policy. Right now, we do not have, uh, prom or homecoming included in that, and I like the prom as an extracurricular activity, so, I would just put that on your guys' radar to think about if that's something you guys are willing to add, that you have to submit yourself to the drug testing pool to participate in those activities, so. Cause those are the only two things students can still do and not be a part of that pool, so.
Prom?
Only one. Which, most of it's done during the school day, but in order to be a candidate or attend the dance would be, you'd have to submit yourself to testing. So, it's those would be the things that I would look at.
Pretty reasonable since we kinda drug test everybody when they come to the dance anyway.
Well, repolize.
Repolize.
Yes, essentially.
You're done actually, drug test.
But he's starting to.
Like, every single person, it's just randomly.
No, it's random, so if you wanna be able to participate prom, go to the dance.
Their, their name would be on that same list of all the athletes.
Which we random draw, uh, two of.
And is that, that does make a team also, then drug testing?
Correct, yes, we tobacco test, uh, we started that just this year, which
Yep, it's very high.
Cause we confiscated, I think, four or five babes the previous year, um, and our positive testing went up because of it, so we've had some issues with it. So I can share those results with you next month too, from the previous year.
So, it's fine, everybody's assumed. Okay, uh, principals report, number twenty-four.
We both had a successful summer school. Um, I had twenty-seven kids that attended and over half of them attended regularly. Our staff was very pleased with the results that we got from our efforts. Kinda changed it up a little bit this year. Instead of inviting anybody, we really limited our kids that we worked with and I think everybody really enjoyed having that specific group of kids that needed extra support, so it went very well. I appreciate you supporting paying staff to be part of that summer school program.
And talking about paying staff, we started our external visit documentation last week. So, we had our leadership team, Jen and I, and we worked for, and Megan Duped, about four hours the other morning. So next March on our visit, we started putting all that documentation together, so.
And this is an external visit here, every five?
Yep.
So in the spring, we'll welcome in probably a team of three, uh, who are contracted by the department, they have to come in, make sure that we're in compliance with rule ten. Every year we have to have an assurance statement saying, we're in compliance with rule ten. Every five years they send somebody out to verify the documentation. It's kind of a formality, but it's a lot of work for our people, particularly Kyle and Jen, cause rule ten is primarily a, a day-to-day operation of your, your curriculum offerings and times and t- and teachers and certifications and such like that, but that'll, that'll be something this spring, we'll keep you posted on that.
Okay, presidents report, number twenty-five. We're gonna do another full board budget workshop like we did last summer, so we kinda need to find a date that works for everybody, coming up here in July, I suppose, it'll be this month.
Last year was the thirtieth of July, so it can be, it can be the end of July, it can be that first week of August, the, the fourth as well. Again, last year was our first year to have more than just, uh, budget committee, but a budget committee would, would probably likely need to meet before the full budget workshop, just so you can kinda start to provide some general information about priorities for the next year. So I would say, I, I think the week of August fourth is probably the best time, it gives us a little bit of time to get budget committee in, cause I'd like to, administrative days first, which is twenty-two, July twenty-two. So, I could meet with budget committee week of twenty-eight.
I have, I have school on the fourth.
Okay. Uh, just that day, Justin? Would the sixth work?
Hang on, the fifth, so my, I'm sorry.
Okay, Wednesday the sixth of August?
Wednesday work three, three.
No, it's a two-day deal.
It's a two.
Fifth and sixth.
You're out.
Five, six?
I'm out with fifth and sixth.
Four?
Or like, in the morning on the fourth? Whatever works would work for me.
It's Monday.
It's morning on the fourth that works for me. I can make that work.
Make that work all the?
Just schedule it.
Excellent.
This is just budget, because this is
This is a workshop.
Full board, full board budget workshop.
Fourth.
On the fourth, Monday the fourth?
What time we talk? How long is it?
Talking like nine o'clock?
Long is a workshop?
Well, at least an hour.
Oh, okay, I didn't know like a half a day or something.
No, at least an hour, potentially, potentially two.
Yeah, last year's was two hours.
We don't go through every line item.
I have, I've been in one, so.
Have pie over to you, anyway, what's on the radar.
We're gonna do nine again, or what do we? Set the time that works, for George and stuff, or?
Nine's fine.
Got it.
Nine AM.
Got it, I'll talk to the, uh, budget committee after this meeting, I'll connect with you about a date the week prior.
Okay, we got, uh, the time of year again for the welcome back meal and the staff of the addition at the country club, that'll be, I assume, now, is that a, yeah, the week is that?
Tuesday the twelfth.
Tuesday the twelfth.
So I hope that works for most of you.
We have to come on.
That's the city council meeting.
That's the city council meeting. Right?
I'll go to city council.
Maybe, maybe go to city council.
I spent enough time at the country club anyways. We eat, we go with that chicken, but we'll, we'll just
Yeah.
I'll smile about it afterwards.
That's fine.
We'll get some chicken.
Yeah. We'll, we'll maybe push up the start time on the twelfth, we can, we can do that, because teachers are in PD, uh, coaches will be, will be going pretty hot at that time, but, um.
City council meeting at seven, is that a good one?
I think six-thirty by the time they do a couple hearings, uh, hearing maybe, might be seven, maybe we'll ask i- if they do have an action item or, uh, if they include that towards the end of their, if they have some flexibility, maybe that can be towards the end of the meeting. But, yeah, we, this is kinda the date that works at, at the club and at the start of our year. There's nothing sacred that says it hap- you know, we can't go the week after school starts, though.
Then you want all the board members there?
Well, ideally, because this is your opportunity to, to be present with your staff. And, uh, break bread with them to start a school year, uh, and then you have a, you always have some staff, a little staff recognition, but, uh, it's good for them to see you and for you to see them.
Right, you know, you're kinda a new.
Okay, let's plan on the twelfth, but I will check and see if, now, we better, Kyle and Jen, we haven't pushed this out, but.
Just keep on, I've, I've been to enough of these anyway, it's fine, I'll, I'll go to city council meeting and you go to the, go to this, and then you can be there at the city council meeting later, okay?
What time we start the, the dinner?
Well, probably, we'll start, well, sometimes you show five-thirty, little social, half hour, eat at six, people, sometimes people are done by six-thirty and move it, to be quite honest.
Some people go play golf. Right, yeah.
Some people go play golf, but some people just stay and have a cocktail, uh, but since it's Tuesday and they got school the next morning, it's, we've had it on Friday, it's a little different in, event when it's on.
When is the first day of school?
A Thursday, the fourteen.
Well, what if you had your stuff and you started the happy hour at five? Then you could go and visit for a while, you guys.
We're fine.
Yeah, okay, we'll keep there, we'll, we'll wiggle in on the time, but
We're fine.
Yeah.
I got it.
Cause I, I've got your caterer already set.
Couple years ago, I don't think there'd be anybody made it to the end of the year.
Every time we land a couple of awards.
There was only three of us made it last year.
Yeah, I've been there in the last couple of years, yeah.
I was there. You know, we'll come if you can.
The twelfth.
And we got Dr. Earl Kelly, Tammy, and Michelle, so, a lot getting awarded experience awards this year, so. And then Wednesday, the twenty-seventh is the NASB meeting in Norfolk that typically like to have, everybody go to if they can make it.
What kind is that?
That's July, twenty-seventh in August.
Twenty-seventh in August.
And that's usually in the later afternoon, right?
Yes, that's about a wor- that's about a four o'clock start, you have a couple of meetings, a couple of breakouts, have a meal, some awards, and done about seven or so. Uh, that's a good, well, we'll have another time to talk about that, but, yeah, and you, you should be on NASB's notification. So if you haven't yet, you might receive a little information on that, but it's just an annual meeting, be good to sit at the table with our friends from Island, uh, they're always re- well represented there, so. That's Wednesday, the twenty-seventh of August, uh, late afternoon into early evening.
Okay. That's what I got, so we'll go to twenty-six. Superintendent report.
Okay, so, we, we still have a, a couple of new staff members that we'll be hiring, you can see, I, I've got a para listed there, Anita Hornstein is, is gonna join our staff as a high school para. Uh, we lost Cook last week, who's moving to the, I think, Abera in Creighton. LeVey's already interviewed a, a potential, uh, candidate for that, so we could be good. And we, we still may have one high school para position that we need to fill, Kyle's, I know, having some conversations and determining, uh, services that need to be provided. Heard from Beckenhauer's, I expect them to be here tomorrow. He said the fifteenth works, I'll send a crew, so they're gonna come take care of your, your nineteen-twenty building and secure that, uh, for us. Buildings look better than they ever have at this point in summer, um, you know, cause we haven't tore anything up too much, so, uh, the crew is, is, uh, is pretty, pretty happy about that. Regular enrollment, uh, Jen, uh, July first was a rollover contract for me, so my vacation and sick have, have reset. And that, that is all I have for you. I'll be in touch more during the week, more details for you, and then, um, oh, I, I may take a crew tonight, I'm gonna text out, uh, before noon on whether we're gonna run to Summerland. If you are interested in going, uh, for a, a visit to Summerland, either tonight or Wednesday, I may go both, uh, because, you know, you just gotta give options to people. That would be a, uh, a five o'clock depart, a five o'clock depart today. I'll, I'll send it out before noon and include you in that message.
Yeah, well, a lot of, a lot of meetings coming up, so, okay, keep sure, not slowing down any there. Thanks, everybody, for today.